I'm gonna call the recess. Commission's meeting to order. And first, we will start with invocation and I'll lead this. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we just thank you so much for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank for the opportunity, Father, that we come together to try to reach an agreement that will be pleasing in thy sight. And not only that, Father, that we won't be building walls, that we will be building people, especially our students. Be with us in this meeting as we deliberate. And Father, we hope that at the end of this meeting, we will have an agreement that will be pleasing in thy sight. Blessed we ask in your name, amen. Okay, I have a response here from Edgecombe County. Proposed agreement and I'm... Would you like to go through that?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, we will now allow our manager to go through our proposed files and provisions to proposals that you made to us and Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, you're familiar with your own original proposal, so I won't read the points of that. You'll see in the copy that you have that our notes or recommended changes are in red. So, to point number one, our comments start at the top of the second page. And this is regarding the phase-in of Edgecombe County taking over the gap payment currently provided by Rocky Mount. Our commissioner's response is, "Edgecombe County is willing to compromise on the reasonable points set forth in this agreement in order to avoid a school split. However, we are not able to agree to phasing in our coverage of the gap payment currently paid by Rocky Mount, considering the fact that doing so would obligate us to proportionally raise the current expense allocation to Edgecombe schools. And the financial liability we are putting on ourselves by agreeing to a proportionate share of new capital expenditures. We maintain our proposal to pay the differential if our current expense appropriation is lower than that of Nash County, starting in five years." Point number two, which is basically stipulating that in year 21, '22, Edgecombe County would pay the per pupil expenditure as determined and appropriated by Nash County Board, our commissioners are in agreement with that. Point number three, which talks about our proportionate share of capital outlaying, our commissioner's response is, "That is agreed. However, we ask that language of the bill to include a provision that would require the Nash-Rocky Mount School Board to annually submit a proposed budget to the Edgecombe Board of Commissioners, and they be given the opportunity to review and make recommendations." And there's a note to see the attached suggested language in the draft legislation which is attached to what we've given to you. Number four, there is agreement, but I think that there was, what we believe may have been an error in the way that that was presented. And we think that it should probably read, "In addition, a proportionate share of all other capital funds," as opposed to "all capital funds." Also, I'd like to add a note under number four, that language should be added to create a process to resolve any disagreements that may arise on the computation of the amounts to be paid under current expense or capital expenditures. And it says, "See suggested language in the same drafted legislation that's attached." Number five, our response is, "Edgecombe Board does not agree to this provision, and it should be removed." And for those who may not have a copy, this is regarding legal action from the School Board. Edgecombe Board does not agree to this provision, and it should be removed. We believe that if the Nash County Board feels they need this provision, and it does not involve the Edgecombe County Commissioners, then they should seek this independent of this agreement. Point number six, which is regarding retaining the same geographic boundary as established July 1, 1992, our commissioners agree to that point. Point number seven, which is regarding a change of the name of the Nash-Rocky Mount School System. Our Board does not agree with this point, also considering that this has never come up in previous discussions and was only brought to our attention by the Nash County Board two days prior to this meeting. Chairman Wiggins feel that this is unreasonable to ask us to consider this matter now, or for it to hold up an agreement on the other terms. Those are the responses and comments from our Board based on the proposal that we were presenting.
Discussion. Any discussion on what Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners has... They asked for removal of number five. Do not agree with number seven. And want some language change in... Three. Yeah, and one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, how do you propose to go about this?
Discussing one, I mean, start with number one. Let's have a discussion.
Are you asking members of your Board to discuss?
Both, both Boards.
Well, certainly, the opinion of our majority of our Board, I won't speak for the whole Board, but we interpreted y'all's first proposal that we got in your letter, Mr. Chairman, to be a phase-out. We considered that. Do not really like it, and all the phone calls I've had since that became public has been about mainly that one item. I don't see how we would ever consider waiting five whole years before we get relief from our taxpayers and utility payers on the, what is known now as the gap money. I think we made a very fair proposal to do it over a five-year period, which is what you asked for, and do it in increments of 25 percent because we were waiting for one year to start that. And I consider, the majority of our Board considers that to be really a firm point that we must stick with. Our people already are just hammering us to death about even considering that, and if we go the other way, it's just not gonna work, what y'all are asking for.
Well, I think my response to that, Mr. Davis, is we've done this for 26 years and...
Twenty-four years, I think.
Twenty-four.
Doesn't matter.
And we do, you know, we certainly have a willingness to make our followings is funding. We have 6,000 other students in the Edgecombe system that if we phase out, as you are proposing, we have to give 6,000 other students of the Edgecombe system 25 percent. And we believe that, based on what's coming out of our staff, is that in five years, we will be able to handle this. We really don't believe that financially, that we can handle what you're asking for. And really, and would ask for the support of your majority in terms of assisting us in phasing it out. Maybe you misunderstood, but it was understood initial language, but our manager has really stated what that intent was, and maybe it was confusing, but our intent was at that time, was that the Rocky Mount stay in that business for the five years.
He did state that our meeting in Raleigh, that some of us attended, and that's the first I had heard it put that way.
I can understand you misunderstanding.
Sure, understand.
Mr. Davis, too, the additional hardship, we haven't had a chance to prepare ourselves for it. You understand that, I'm sure, as a businessman, that it's gonna take a buildup of our resources, and it might have some implications on our tax rate, different things. We've got revow coming up this year, and we don't know what that's gonna do to us. It's probably not gonna be positive as far as our budget's concerned. But we think that the five year is reasonable in light of what the Chairman said, considering how long this has been going on, 24 years, as you pointed out. To just suddenly overnight change it like that, we don't think is reasonable or fair, and we certainly like y'all's consideration on that.
Well, I would have to say, we would use the same argument that you used to quote off on. We've been doing it for 24 years, and our people are just not happy about that, and to agree to continue for five more years is just something that we can't do. And, you know, I realize your dilemma about the other students, but those students are not receiving benefit of that now, which is one of the unfortunate things, and one of the real problems with the Senate bill from day one, is the fact that you've got students living in Rocky Mount on the same street, and that some of them get additional funding as much as $300 per student more than ones living across the street from them. That's been going on for 24 years. But yet, you want to tie the correct to that to us, and certainly Nash County also has a revow, and we're in the aisle far enough along to know pretty close where we are, and it's not pretty either, and which is another concern that we have, but certainly not the basis of us bringing this whole matter up. The basis is just the fact that, you know, what we're doing is just not fair to the taxpayers and utility payers in Nash County, whether they're in Rocky Mount or whether they're outside of Rocky Mount.
Well, the students on the Edgecombe side that you're saying are being paid more, they always were paid more because those students were in the Rocky Mount system. So, it's nothing new. That is nothing new in terms, the students that we're talking about were in the Rocky Mount system.
Sure, I understand that.
And the Rocky Mount system was probably paying a higher ADM than any of our other systems. So, and at that time, it was a leveling process, so those students are always, you've always had that difference. So, in terms of Edgecombe and that part of the county, because, as I stated before, in my lifetime, that portion of the city has never been in the Edgecombe system, and what we are... What your proposal creates is an entire new school system.
And of course, the... Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just gonna say, we are here to work out an agreement. And in working out an agreement, it's just like legislators, when the House and the Senate don't agree, they come together and compromise some way in between. Let's talk about that. With number one, what can we agree on, both sides?
Well, I guess...
Now, you're saying five, and Nash County is saying 25 percent each year, starting in 17, 18.
Well, what's ironic, Mr. Chairman, is during this whole process, the message from the people that are opposed to this is how little of money we are talking about. And we're saying it's down now to 120, maybe 130,000 dollars. 25 percent of that is 30 or 40,000 dollars. If the message y'all have is a true message, I don't see that being that much of a big deal. Of course, not that we necessarily agree with the numbers, but the numbers y'all, you know, the opposition to us have used is a pretty low number.
And those figures are unknown from year to year.
They are.
And so, I think we really don't want to put ourselves in a bankrupt position in terms of something that we can't pay. And that would be our position. I think in consultation with my Board, we could reduce this to four years.
Could reduce it to what?
Four years.
Four years.
In the letter that Chairman Bellfield received on May the 18th, the first dot point says, Edgecombe was, I'm sorry, the second dot point. Edgecombe County is also willing to commit to a withdrawal of the participation of Rocky Mount over, over the next five years. So, I don't think there was a misunderstanding about Rocky Mount being phased out of the funding formula. I think that has been what has been implied or said all along, and this is...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Feltin, that's okay. I apologize for interrupting you, but that's exactly our point, what you just read. Furthermore, those talking points have been adjusted from meeting to meeting between the two groups of us.
I'm reading the latest letter dated May the 18th.
But you didn't say anything about 25 percent in that talking point, did you?
Well...
We agree to phase it down.
Well, go ahead and finish, and then I'll say what I got, so I don't interrupt you like you didn't.
Okay, go ahead. I apologize again for interrupting you.
Are you through, Mr. Feltin?
I'm through.
Okay. Well, if you understand what's being said here, it's very clear that a withdrawal of participation of Rocky Mount over the next five years, it doesn't say Rocky Mount will be, not participate after five years.
And I don't have...
This was a clarified letter that was put out by the Chairman.
It might have... There was some other language in there, and I'm not reading it, but I think our manager explained fully what the intent of the letter was, and it was misunderstanding, and we attempted to clarify it again, he opened.
It's been stated all along that Rocky Mount would be phased out.
And we're talking about phasing them out one year at a time.
No, sir, you're talking about, you're talking about in five years, you will take them out. A phase-out...
Well, whatever, however you want to express that.
Well, phase-out means over a period of time, it doesn't mean point certain in time.
As you would understand it.
Yes, sir, that's the way I was taught.
As you...
That's my understanding.
Well, that was not the intent.
Okay.
And as I said, those talking points have been changing. It seems that every time we come together, there's something different about that, about the talking points.
We offered today, Mr. Feltin, we put on the table four years.
Four years.
I would like to make a comment also. I've been a Commissioner for five years now. I would say out of the five years, three years, we have heard that you want Rocky Mount out of the formula, and that we should pay our way. Today, we're here to propose a way to do that. That letter said nothing about any particular amount of withdrawal, simply said we would have Rocky Mount out within five years. We have a fiduciary responsibility to our constituents, just like you do, in order to prepare ourselves for what's necessary for the future, to treat our students equally, and to resolve this thing, which grown people should be able to do without bringing outside sources in. This is what we're proposing, this is what we can do, and that's the only thing that I can say about it. We've been talking about it for three years, just think, we'd be a year closer to that right now if we'd come here three years ago and done this.
Mr. Chairman, we put on the table four years.
You're saying four years?
Four years.
Before you start paying the difference?
We will assume the full gallon, four years.
With no payment in between.
For your Board's consideration.
Can we get an amendment?
I can't agree on four years, or three years, or two years. We must start this process, when we start the process, one year later. That's the least our citizens expect us to do, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Can we lower the percentage?
I don't know how you lower...
Well, in other words, what I mean by that is that they pay a percentage now, and Rocky Mount make the difference in four years, whatever that is, Edgecombe County takes it over completely. Can you, can you deal with that?
I don't understand.
I'm saying to pay a percentage.
What would, you know, what are you... What are you proposing that amount of percentage to be?
Well, I haven't. I'm just saying, a lower percentage than 25. What do you think? 15, 10, 20?
Two. I'm thinking at you. Well, I really think, Mr. Chairman, that I'm hearing from the majority members that's carrying the weight of whether this is successless or not. I'm hearing them stick to what's in this agenda.
Yeah, I hear that. I hear that.
We need to hear from them. We need a counter, we need a counter from you in terms of what your Board...
Well, that's what I'm working on now. I hear, I know where they stand, but I want to come out of here today with an agreement that we won't walk out of here and just say boom.
And we would love to.
And so, that's what I'm trying to do. What percentage can you agree in phasing Rocky Mount out, and at the end of four years, you take it 100 percent?
We have, we have stated what we could do.
I know what you said, and I know what they said, but that's a deadlock.
Do you have a suggested percentage that you think you can sell to your Board?
Right off, I'm throwing out percentages now. I say 10, 15, or 20.
We said two.
And they take it, take it 100 percent in four school years. We don't need to leave here with nothing now, and I...
I think, Mr. Davis, you...
I'm not intending on leaving here with nothing.
Well, we can stay here long, stay here long as you, we stay here long we need to.
I don't think we should belabor this point, we just need to ask you, are you going to relent on 25 percent, or is that your final figure, and that's it?
I was amazed, quite frankly, that y'all know, we want you to pick it all up. We begged and pleaded with some members of our Board and got it to what we brought to you two days ago, which was a 25 percent phase-out, which matched really, in content, what you asked for to start with. I don't think you'll find many people that will read that first letter that would interpret it like we interpreted it. Of course, the staff in Raleigh interpreted it that way that day we were up there. But I don't see any, looking across three of the four of our majority, I don't see any movement in the percentages that we have proposed, unless you want to start something the first year, and then go to 25 times. Y'all seem to be real concerned about that first year. So, we were able to convince them to back off of the first year and do it in still your five years, which is really too long, at 25 percent. We have compromised on item one already.
I would like the County Manager to correct me if I'm wrong, but we have stated today what we can do to resolve this issue. We're doing what we can do to resolve this issue. If you're not going to give, then the issue is never gonna be resolved. As I pointed out, we've already spent three years doing this, and by Mr. Bellfield's admission the other day in the meeting, you know what you're gonna get, which was totally inappropriate. You know as well as I know, it'll be a lot more than three years before this issue will be resolved now, if we don't settle something in this room. And we can drag this on forever. It's not doing anybody any good, not you, not us, not the City of Rocky Mount. We came here today with a proposal that we could live with. However you look at it, good, bad, or indifferent, we have proposed what we can do. Am I correct, Mr. Management?
Yes, sir.
And our statement to that, Mr. Baudel, is we brought you two days ago what we can do and still live in Nash County as an elected official, which is gonna be difficult in itself, but that's what we signed up to do.
Might I address that point for just a minute?
Sure.
I don't want to get into a contest here, but you tell us about your constituents, but I read the paper and the business community and other people, a lot of other people, don't want this split. They just simply don't. I don't know how many constituents you're referring to. I know people on my side come to me and say, "We don't want this school system split." I'm not questioning your number or how many people, you're gonna hear complaints about everything, but we need to find an end for everybody, however many years it is, because, again, I reiterate, according to Mr. Bellfield the other day, you know what you're going to get. You know as well as I do, it will be a lot more than three years before this will be resolved, one way or the other. And every year, it will cost all of us money, every year.
We thought that was a direct threat to, by the way. We really did think, we were insultified, frankly. There's no way for us in...
Something I've said is...
No, 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 no. Mr. Bellfield saying the other day that we knew what we were gonna get, that's very insulting. We don't know what we're getting, I don't think he knows what we're gonna get. I told Mr. Bellfield and the gentleman long ago that we have friends in Raleigh, too.
Well, if that offended you, I insulted you, I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would just...
But I think on the other side of this is, you know, we are agreeing to commit to capital in this agreement, and that also is unknown, because we do know that our manager reviewing the CIP, some of the projections in there, understanding that everything's projected, and they're talking about new schools, and we're talking about paying 11 percent of that. So, we are also committing, making other financial commitments in this agreement that we have not, that still isn't unknown for us, because the School Board might decide to do this or do that, but we don't know what we would get funded in that. So, there are other considerations in this agreement that's gonna cost us, and we could, you know, we would like to see, number one, some negotiation into that.
Will it serve any purpose to move beyond number one, Mr. Chairman, this point?
That's exactly what was on my mind.
And see if we can work out any of the rest of it, because it looks like we got some other problems also.
Let's come back to it, and make a few things that are in your mind, okay? Number two, we agree on. Number three, you agree, but you want some language change. I certainly don't have... I think it would be appropriate, and we have said this, that in the past, to the School Board, that I'll present budget to Edgecombe County Commissioners, as well as you do to Nash County Commissioners.
That's what we're asking for.
Can we go over, can we ask that you go over the language change as it is applicable to each section and clarify exactly what you mean?
Okay. Would you...
Go ahead, Mr. Feltin.
Sure. So, in...
Number three, right?
Right. That's correct. So, this is referencing to the one-page draft language, and it would be point A, section 20A, at the top. Yes, sir, at the very top, which says, "The Nash-Rocky Mount Board of Education shall annually submit a school budget to the Board of Commissioners of Nash County for approval in accordance with Article 31 of Chapter 115(c) of the General Statutes. The Nash-Rocky Mount Board of Education shall also submit the annual budget to the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, which shall review the budget and provide recommendations on adoption of the budget to the Board of Commissioners of Nash County. The Nash-Rocky Mount Board of Education and the County Commissioners of Nash County shall make their best efforts to achieve a fair, reasonable, and practical expenditure of capital outlay and debt service funds on the Nash-Rocky Mount School Administrative Unit Schools located in Edgecombe County." Final approval of the... Final approval of the full Nash Rocky Mount School Administrative Unit Budget shall be made by the Board of Commissioners of Nash County."
So what?
I, I think you say here is that you're asking for a chance to look at the budget each year.
And make comments.
And make comments.
Yes, sir.
And, and try to, this, this is something that we've been somewhat fearful of. We can't put ourselves in a position where we've got to have your approval to approve- Let me finish, Mr. Bell.
Okay.
That we're in a position where we've got to get your permission to approve our school budget. That, that's not what you're saying here, the way I read it. You just want that courtesy look and certainly discussion, which is reasonable.
That's correct.
Yeah, something we should have been doing already.
But yet you understand that the final decision has to be Nash County.
Absolutely.
That's what, that's what the language says, Mr. Davis. The language says this.
Well, you know, I'm trying to not have the problem we had with the first letter.
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, we, we have had problems with letters, verbal communication, additions to the proposal. So we've had a, a continuing a problem. That's not the only problem we've had with this.
Change in talking.
Got it. But, uh, could we hear from staff, Mr. Lamb, if you see any issue with this?
The, the one thing would be that, obviously, where those capital outlay and debt service funds, where the school board decides to allocate funds as in the past twenty-four years is primarily a responsibility of the school board. But I, I, I believe this board for three years has attempted to get the, um, ten-year capital plan before the Edgecombe County Commissioners, and for whatever reason, that was not, that was not achieved. But, um, I agree, it's a, it's a reasonable request to ask to review it on a yearly basis.
And I'll accommodate, so I'll just review it, but let you know what we think of it.
Well, the only thing I would say is the sentence that says the Nash Rocky Mount Board of Education and the County Commissioners of Nash County, we allocate capital dollars to the school system. We don't tell them how, when, or where to spend those dollars. So, uh, a fair, reasonable effort on our part is to budget to our schools, and then they run the school system. They determine where that money is being used.
What, if I may ask, what sentence are you pointing to, sir?
Uh, about halfway down, Mr. Evans, says the Nash Rocky Mount Board of Education and the County Commissioners of Nash County shall make their best efforts to achieve a fair, reasonable, and practical expenditure of capital outlay and debt service funds on the Nash Rocky Mount School Administrative Unit.
Would it be acceptable just to strike County Commissioners out of there?
Well, if, I don't mean to interrupt, but if the rest of that sentence says, uh, school unit, schools located in Edgecombe County, as certain, nothing binding, it's just simply asking that those schools-
Well, I would hope that they would, they would be fair and reasonable for schools in both counties, Mr. Evans.
That is our hopes as well.
But, uh, but the, the two words in here that, that I, that I, I read the last sentence, it says, "Final approval of the full Nash Rocky Mount School Administrative Unit Budget shall be made by the Board of Commissioners of Nash County." But I hope that if the school board in Nash County makes what they consider to be a fair and reasonable judgment on where those expenditures should be made, that, uh, that would not lead to unnecessary discussion from the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners.
I think this is dramatic, but-
Ours will only be a discussion.
Right.
The final decision-
The final decision is yours.
The final decision on this is, is, in this language, is Nash County Commissioners.
Well, why do you even need that sentence, period? If you, we have confidence that our school board will, will do what's fair and reasonable.
Why take it out?
Well, I-
Do what? Why take it out?
Why not?
We have no power. We're willing to submit. We have no power in a decision, no matter what it is, and we're willing to look at it. We just simply want to know what's going on, which is not another reason for waiting.
And we would, we would agree for you to look at it.
No problem.
Well-
You, you cannot, you cannot determine or try to influence what the school board has determined to be fair and reasonable.
Cannot a citizen of Edgecombe County have input to the school board?
Certainly.
Then why can't a commissioner have input into the school board?
You can have, you can have input. You can. Any citizen can have input.
I think, uh, I think this language is clear. And it gives us, it gives us nothing. And if you, uh, we, I just asked you, this is what we asked you to consider for this agreement. I don't think it's in a debate on, you can debate it, but this, this language gives Nash County, Nash Rocky Mount, Nash County Commissioners full of authority to pass a budget.
Fine, take, take, take the county- I want this county commissioners out right here because we don't make judgments on where the money is spent. We provide the funding.
The Nash County Board of Education and the County Commissioners.
But if they want to do something that you don't want to do-
We, we, this is what we propose.
I can't do it. I can't.
This, this is what we propose. There's no need for, this is, this, this is what we propose.
All right, let's move on. Let's move on.
All right. Does that mean we're, we're okay right now?
Agreed.
Yeah. Let's stay okay. All right. Okay, let's. Let's go, let's go where?
Did y'all agree on that?
We said let's move on.
Well, we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're okay.
Move, just, move on means what was-
We're okay.
Move on means we got it.
Good enough, okay.
We agree.
All right, number four.
So, number, number four, unless I misunderstood the, the way that it was originally written, we felt that it was an, an error for when it read, "In addition, all capital funds, including statewide, local bonds, so on and so forth." We think it would better read to say, "In addition, a proportionate share of all other capital funds." I understand the intent is our proportionate shares not to be just county appropriation from general fund, but also any other funds that come from the state in our direction. A proportionate share of what we, we receive should go towards, uh, should go towards the Nash Rocky Mount School System.
That was the intent.
Okay.
The proposal. And we- And we understood that.
Okay.
We understood that to be intent. I'm just hoping you understand intent on number one.
Yeah, we got it. Okay.
What five went up? With the first part of that one, one is the second part.
So, also I added a note here to say, uh, language should also be added to create a process to resolve any disagreements that may arise on the computation of the amounts to be paid under current expense or capital expenditures. Uh, as you know, we've had discussions, if not debates, on the numbers. So in the proposed language, you'll see, um, item D.
Item what?
D.
D is dog.
D is a dog, yes, sir. It says, "If the finance officers of the Nash Rocky Mount School Administrative Unit, Nash County and Edgecombe County respectively cannot agree by consensus on the computation of the amounts to be paid under this section, then the boards of each entity shall select by consensus a certified public accountant with expertise in school finance to be paid in equal shares by each unit to determine the computation of the amounts to be paid."
What does equal shares mean?
Divided by three.
What, whatever-
Divided by?
Three.
Whatever the, whatever the-
We're saying if there's, it says in here, there's a disagreement between the, the school unit, the school system and the two counties.
Okay. Well, we attempted some yesterday to do something here and finally realized it was very complex, and we thought too complex to try to put it in a bill. Uh, we made some staff, uh, our staff did. And what we hoped to be able to do is to, prior to this thing taking effect that first year you're out of next, is to have some methodology to derive at that number that we both agree on. So it, it rolls out every year. I don't think we're there quite yet. So we know we've got some work to do between us on that. Mr. Lamb, am I stating where we ended up at yesterday, or, Ms. Dorsey?
Yeah, the-
It, it's, it's not an easy number to come up with.
I agree with that, sir.
You agree?
It's complicated, man.
It's complicated, though. I wish we could have a formula that we could put in this, but it, it's-
Do you see anything wrong with Mr. Bellfield's language, Mr. Becker?
Personally, I do not, but I would have to ask the staff-
Sharing the cost of getting it done, uh, some minutes.
And certainly if you go through it one time, it, it ought to become, the light bulb ought to go off with all of us so we know how to do it from then on.
That's right.
Hopefully it wouldn't be an issue in the future, but we, we will, we will-
And I think the real goal should be that when we get to a decision, if it did, we do that, we, we work on that and try to get it resolved ahead of time, so we're not dealing with it at that point in time.
I agree.
Mr. Lamb?
Well, we developed yesterday a, um, a, a spreadsheet that, um, we, that parallels the current expense computation that the school board does. And like you said, I, I feel like, um, it's, it's, we feel like it's good there. I mean, we, we feel like what we've developed is good, however, um-
Well, you do then-
In, in the past, there's been some disagreement, and, um, we, we only had the information that we have, and in the past, there's been a lack of information provided to our finance officer to come up with a formula, so-
And the only thing we're asking that you're agreed is if that does not happen, then the third party kicks in.
Yeah, I think we've developed a formula that, um, that we should be able to sit down and talk about in the next few days.
Well, I think with the language that we're proposing, even with your formula, it, this does not necessarily have to kick in, but-
I'm not opposed to the provision.
I'm not. I'm, I'm really liking what you're running.
So that appears that we're together on that.
Appreciate it.
Moving on?
All right.
Number five.
Yes, sir. Of course, that's related to, uh, legal action from the school board. Again, Edgecombe Board does not agree to this provision, should be removed. We believe that if Nash County feels they need this provision, as it was stated in our last meeting a couple of days ago, and it does not involve Edgecombe County Commissioners, then they should seek this, or you should seek this independent of this agreement.
I think they're working on this in Raleigh too, aren't they, Mr. Davis?
Oh, yeah, they-
And I don't think it's anything for us to be concerned about.
I don't know where that's going.
I can understand why y'all are, but we don't want to be involved in that.
Well, the way, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so I, what they're working on in Raleigh,
at least through our County Commissioners Association, is getting it to the point where school boards will not be suing boards of county commissioners, instead sitting down and, and negotiating and have a compromise, but no legal action. No, but where that is, uh, we believe it, well, we believe, at least I do, I believe that it eventually becomes law, but it won't this year.
Well, I don't, I, I frankly don't believe that our board should be involved in trying to take away the ability of local school boards to do their due diligence. And this is the Nash Rocky Mount School Board, uh, and you're asking us to participate in legislation that would take their ability away to suit, uh, and we just believe- Present school board, present school board, uh, legislation is, takes care of that. We don't-
Let's go about it like this. Do y'all agree that this particular item will not have any effect on, on your board of commissioners or school board whatsoever?
No, I don't agree. I don't agree that it, I think if we enter, enter this agreement, okay?
What it says, Mr. Wigan, is it's the school unit, and we're talking about the current Nash Rocky Mount School Unit. Uh, we, we can substitute the Nash Rocky Mount School Unit if, if you want us to. But it has no effect on you whatsoever. The one real problem we have where we got no movement is this same item when we tried to work this thing out another way. Uh, and you know, you said, nowhere in the world are you gonna ever agree to be a participant in a suit, even though you're our funding partner. I know, I, I can't understand why you wouldn't, but that's, we don't need to go back there. We don't need to go backwards today. But what we want to do is to get some protection. What we're gonna end up with, with here for Nash County is a very unique situation. It, it's not like this anywhere else in the state. And we're going, we're looking for some protection to keep us from getting into a situation we got into two years ago. And only, we got sued. Y'all didn't get sued, Rocky Mount didn't get sued, or start the process of a suit. It was only us. And that can't happen anywhere else in the state. We feel like if our legislators in Raleigh want this resolved so they don't have to resolve it, we've got a chance of getting this language put in this agreement, and that's what we're trying to do. But, but it doesn't affect you at all. I mean, so I don't know why you got a problem with it.
If it doesn't affect us at all, then we should take no action on it.
Why is it necessary?
Why, why should we be involved in, in legislation? Why should we be involved in legislation, uh, to, to do that? We can't, there's no need for us to be involved in that legislation.
You're not involved.
Yes, we will. You're asking us to agree to it.
We're asking to put this in this document.
Then we are a part of a, we are a part of taking away an authority from an elected body that we, that you say we are not a part of.
It doesn't affect you, is what I'm saying.
Well, then, then we need no vote on that.
Can I address one thing that you said that I, I feel like maybe none of us understand? We do believe, in essence, that as a funding partner, should anything go to court, that eventually part of it will follow us. But are we going to agree to be sued? No, and I don't think that you guys would either. When you have no say-
But we go, you know, as a law states, we can be sued.
When you have no say, no board member, no input, even by the language of, of number three, they readily admit we have no power about anything going on over there. We believe, again, I'm, I'm gonna state this again, and if y'all disagree with me, please tell them, that by virtue of being a funding partner, that, that anybody that would sue y'all would go down the food chain, which would include us.
I don't believe the current statute, y'all would be liable for any-
You don't believe that, or do you know that?
If you look at the current statute, um, if, if we got sued and they got a judgment, say for six million dollars against our county, and we did a supplemental tax to our citizens, it would not go to the citizens on the Edgecombe side, and it would be up to Rocky Mount under the current statute to make up the gap. So I think if we, if we brought y'all in as a third-party defendant, I believe y'all would have a defense that y'all are complying with the current statute. It would be up to Rocky Mount. I don't think they could get out of the suit because they are responsible for that additional gap that would be created.
But this, this proposed agreement changes that. So there is no, this proposed agreement changes that and make us a funding partner?
It would.
It would.
So it changes everything that you're saying?
So, so if this agreement was adopted and, and we were sued, uh, and they brought you in as a third-party defendant, you would have an interest in the, in the- So, so if this agreement was adopted and, and we were sued, uh, and they brought you in as a third-party defendant, you would have an interest in the, in the lawsuit?
And, and the-
And exposure.
And, and we'll, and we, and we understand that. We had some exposure, you know, we believe the last time, because you all were gonna join us, in, anyway, whatever that exposure was, but, uh, but I'm a, I guess I'm an advocate that school boards, uh, need to have an authority.
Yeah.
They need to be, they need to have an ability to make us, to be able to make us fund this school system if we're not doing those. So I don't think, that's something that-
Well, what we'd like for you to do is keep that right for Edgecombe County a- and lead us to what our board feels, which we now simply feel they should not be able to.
And I, and I, and I, and I don't disagree with you, it's just that this board over here does not need to sit here and help you do that.
But, but you're saying that you think you are a potential party in it, and you may have to pay your part?
And I, but I'm not really, and I, and I'm saying that if, 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 if the school boards take legal action, if there's a, uh, an elected board over there, they take legal action against our boards, then it becomes our responsibility? And if we're not doing what we're supposed to do, I think if we're doing what we're supposed to do under the statute of what we can agree to do with our school boards, uh, then these things would not happen. I don't know what triggered, uh, the Nash County issue, okay, I don't know what triggered that.
It's not only Nash County, it's many counties.
Well, those counties, then the General Assembly, more than likely, we handle that. But to ask us to, to agree for this, this, this particular school unit, I say, I say there's something-
Mr. Wiggins, wha- what you're doing is you got a potential situation where it's gonna leave you better off than what you are. So, because if we were to get this in there, that potential for your lawsuit is gonna go away, 'cause there wouldn't be one. A- and you also got a situation where it's not gonna affect your board of commissioners or your school board in Edgecombe County, but yet you want to be difficult about us leaving it in here, or you don't agree.
I, I'm saying that needs to be a different legislation.
Okay. Well, this is, this is the time we think we got a good shot of getting it done, a- a- and we definitely want it in there.
Well, I, and, uh, we're opposed to that.
Well, what about, what about what you said about putting, excluding us and putting Nash, Rocky Mountain school, what did we think about that?
I got a, I got, I don't have a problem.
I, I-
That's what it refers to anyway.
I think Nash, Rocky Mountain School, they need to talk with Nash, Rocky Mountain School Board.
They do.
They do, with Nash, Rocky Mountain School Board.
Okay.
In terms of-
Could y'all agree to that?
What?
If Nash, Rocky Mountain School Board doesn't have a problem, that's not, that's Nash, Rocky Mountain School Board, that's an elected body.
We won't agree that we've got to have our school board permission to put this in there, of course not.
No, I'm not saying that, but I mean, would you, uh, could you substitute them for us and be sure we are out of it?
Uh-
The school unit, we all know refers to Nash, Rocky Mountain School.
Right.
If it, do, do you want to say the Nash, Rocky Mountain School Unit?
Well, I believe that-
And you agree to it, that's fine.
I, I can't agree to that. First of all, the Nash, Rocky Mountain, that unit was created back in the consolidation, so this is a Nash, Rocky Mountain, this is a Nash, Rocky Mountain School Unit.
But in this one, which that's gonna supl- supplant the whole one.
And they need to check with Nash, Rocky Mountain.
Yeah, well, I think you need a dialogue with them too, before you do that. But I mean, I don't see-
So y'all gonna now start telling us when we need to have dialogue with our school board, is that what I'm getting below there?
I'm just saying that we don't want any part of it, okay? And what you do beyond that's up to you.
If, if I could, um, the, um, the, the idea, of course, is a legislative goal of the County Commissioners Association, and it has been for several years, to end these very costly lawsuits that school boards, Union County, of course, was the marquee case in recent years, and, um, it costs the citizens of these counties a lot of money. And so our association, your county may not agree with the majority rule and, and the association's position, but they have gone on record of supporting an end to this type of lawsuit. They are now talking about trying to get a five-year moratorium. Our county already is under a two-year moratorium, uh, but this is the last year. You know, and structurally speaking, because of the unique structure of our school system, going, we're the only county of a hundred counties that goes into another county. And so structurally, we are the weakest county board of commissioners vis-a-vis its school system in North Carolina. And I'll tell you why. Not only, we're the only county in North Carolina that has to work with another county for funding and other matters regarding our school system. Currently, we're the only county in North Carolina for our county school system that has to deal with a municipality, Rocky Mountain, in the funding of our school system. We've already seen the meeting on Wednesday, hiring the lobbyists, that this other county, our partner, this municipality, has been able to join with our school board against the county commissioners. Now, what other county in North Carolina do you have such a scenario? None. So we are structurally at a disadvantage, and if any county in North Carolina needs to be protected from lawsuits, last, last time when it was threatened, we had an eleven-member board, and three of those members were from the Edgecombe side, and had we gotten a judgment against us, and we sent a supplemental bill to our taxpayers, the Edgecombe County side of our school system would not have gotten that bill. So there are structural problems that are unique to the Nash, Rocky Mountain school system, that no other county in North Carolina is faced with. And again, I would argue, vis-a-vis our school system, we are the weakest county in North Carolina in the governance of our school policy and, and funding.
And I don't disagree with what you're requesting, I just say that I don't think we have a role. Our board should play a role in saying to Nash, Rocky Mountain school system that they can't be sued. I think that's different legislation that, that the county commissioners should, should be sending up. And if you've already got a moratorium on it, then-
It's over this year, though.
It ends.
Well, then, maybe they, maybe the same way you got that moratorium, you could get another one, but I don't, I don't think that we should be a part of it.
Well, the reason, I think, um, the proponents of this provision wanted it in there is that when we, if we can come to an agreement, we don't want, 'cause you have, you have specifically stated in the past that you don't agree with the county commissioner's position, the state county commissioner's position, that you believe school boards should be able to sue counties, and our concern, quite frankly, is that y'all will, if we try to incorporate this in any legislation, that you will fight us on it. And you will, you, you will work with our school board, as you have in the past-
I commit to you, I com- I commit to you-
To thwart this effort.
If that is a Nash County, we have no interest in fighting a Nash County bill. We did not fight your moratorium. We have no interest in fighting what Nash County wants. What I, I, what we have in, what I, what I have an interest in is saying that we are not a part, I don't, we're not gonna fight anything that Nash County wants that does not impact our county. We are, we support, we want, we gotta grow together. We support the twins kind of initiatives. We've gotta grow our, as Nash County grow, we grow. As Edgecombe County grow, so does Nash. So we support all of those other projects that we have, the airport, the library, this partnership here. We have a monetary vested interest that we get no taxable benefit. So we are, this side of the table is certainly supported, and I commit to you, I'll fight this board in terms of they were wanting to fight legislations to get you, for you to have legislation for the school board, uh, not to sue you.
And I'll help it. Now, that's about as good as we can do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mo, Chairman? Uh, without that particular item, and it, apparently they took in a, a hard stand on it, I don't think we need to move forward anymore, 'cause that's one that we're not gonna give up on. A- and for them not to allow that to be in there, or not agree with it being there when it has no effect on them whatsoever, in my opinion, has just been difficult. But we definitely need that. Now, the state might not allow to put it in there, but it doesn't need to be, Edgecombe County not allowing us to put it in there.
And, and we can't allow you, what, what we're saying we don't agree with?
I, I understand you don't agree with it.
Okay.
You made it clear, which I, I wouldn't, I don't understand why you don't, but that's, that, you know, a lot of things being you don't agree on.
Well, I don't understand-
You don't understand why I am, and I don't understand where you are, but-
Because I don't understand why we're here today, because I don't even think that we'd be talking, need to be talking about this split, but we are here today. So we are here because, so to try to get an understanding, or at least try to reach compromise.
Since this is gonna be a sticking, sticking point, I have a question. We're sitting in a room here with several lawyers, I wanna go back to my first point. You, Mr. Lamb, are far more qualified than I am to talk on this subject. Are you telling me that if we fund eleven percent, or ten percent, or nine percent, and you are scoo- you are sued by the Nash County School Board, that they have no means to file suit against us, even if we are a, a funding partner? Is that-
I, I, I believe under the current statute, we would, we would make you a third-party defendant, or whatever the proper term is.
Exactly.
Um, however, under the current statute, I, I, I believe that you, you, you might be thrown out as a defendant.
Might be.
You could be.
You might not be added as a third-party.
You might not be added.
It's a discretion of the judge.
But the possibility is there that we would be a third party.
Right.
So we're already under the, under that cloud that we'll, we could be a third party, and we're aware of that.
Under the- Why would you not want to remove yourself from that then? It, it's very easy.
Well, again-
I mean, let Edgecombe County School Board sue you, i- if y'all have that potential to be sued.
Under, under the proposal, you would be a, we would bring you in as a third-party defendant, uh, and I believe you would be added, because you would have a curiary interest in the outcome of the case.
And we believe that also, so why would you want it in there?
Because we don't want to be sued, and we don't want y'all to get sued.
I'm, I'm all for that now.
I really think, that's what I'm saying.
That's what it says.
I really think that, uh, school boards are elected in a whole different political unit over there themselves, so as to, and to take that authority from a school board, you have in fact made the county commissioners the school board.
But you look, but what it costs- You look for it, what it costs, the expensive lawyers, getting five and six hundred dollars an hour, dealing with this, that money that could go into the classrooms, uh, fund educations. You have suits that, that lawyers may end up with two, three hundred thousand dollars. You look for, how much money that, that could, that could fund some teachers, or it could fund, uh, capital, uh, projects, and I'm talking, I'm talking about buildings, I'm talking about equipment, which is also capital, computers, and you go on. Uh, they don't need to be suing, school board.
Well, and-
They, they don't need to be suing. What we need to do, if you got unreasonable commissioners, they need to sit down, any commissioner with any kind of sense at all.
At that state, well, I feel-
Or to sit down with the school board a- and come to some reasonable compromise.
And I, and I don't agree with your last thing, and I think in most reasonable people should be able to sit down and resolve those issues.
Right.
And that's why we're here today, to try to resolve it.
That's right.
And so, but, but we think it's enough resolution.
I guess I agree with one thing that causes a problem for me, is because of the great relationship we have with the Edgecombe County School Board. And if we have disagreements on, which we never do, I mean, we either, we tell them when, when they come forward and tell us what they, what they need, we say we might not be able to do a hundred percent of that, but we'll do eighty percent of that. And we sit down and talk about it, and we resolve it, and we don't have a problem. And I don't, it's hard for me to understand an adversarial relationship between two boards that are that important.
It's structural throughout North Carolina. Because they don't have taxing authority in North Carolina, school boards are always, you, you may be the exception, but in, throughout the state, you have county governments and school boards that have disputes. The day I was announced on November seventh, twenty thirteen, I was told on that day that in June of the following year, there had already been discussions about the school board suing Nash County. So we were able to work it out pre-mediation, um, but there was that friction. And it, part of it is throughout the state structurally, that school boards don't have taxing authority.
I understand.
They rely on counties, and so there's that contention in many counties, year after year.
And, and, and if, if, if they don't have the ability to do something, buildings fall down.
Well-
Because, uh, uh, so I'm-
Mr. Wiggins, if you believe in democracy, uh, the voters will take care of something like that. If you've got a board of commissioners that's not funding the schools like they need to, democracy needs to take care of that.
Well, democracy takes care of through the courts also.
Sure.
Democracy also is handled through the court.
Uh, unfortunately, it is. A- and the worst thing i- in my conservative thought process is to have two agencies in one county suing one another and having the taxpayers paying the legal fees on both sides of the-
And I would hope not. It's not something that I would, and you, and you all worked it out.
It, it happens all the time.
You worked it out.
We were able to work it out for a two-year period.
But it was, no, nothing would have been worked out if they didn't have the ability to sue.
Uh, it, it wouldn't be any different than what it would have been without the threat of the suit.
Well, we probably, we never will agree on that point.
Sir?
We never will agree on that point.
On this point here, or just what we're talking about?
On this point.
Okay, understood.
We still, we still opt, optimistic.
I don't think we're gonna agree on, on, uh-
Well, I don't think we're gonna take it out.
Well-
Why don't we let the, uh, the lawyers tell us what-
Uh, well, I mean, I, this is not the place to get, we're gonna get two different legal opinions. Uh, okay, we've been-
I mean, all you're saying is up to the legislature.
The legislature wants to put it in there, they, they can, but you're preventing us from doing that, even asking them to do that. And that seems to be, to be, we sort of have the right to ask.
We guarantee that the legislature's doing a-
We're not preventing the board from doing anything.
Well, you are if you don't allow us to put it in this current bill.
It's a lot stronger on our, on our part to get it as part of a bill that amends the current statute, if we are all together and we all consent to that.
But you, you have a moratorium going, an extension on a moratorium can also be requested. You are, you have a moratorium, you can request a moratorium.
All right. Uh, six we agree on, let's move to seven.
Yes, sir, of course, you know, that's regarding the, uh, changing of the name of the Nash, Rocky Mountain School System. My board does not agree at this point, also considering this has never come up in previous discussions, and was only brought to our attention by your board two days, uh, prior to this meeting. Uh, Mr. Wiggins feels like it is unreasonable to ask us to consider this matter now, or for it to hold up an agreement on the other terms.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I'm really puzzled, to be honest with you. When y'all brought this up the other day, I guess my question is, why do you want to change the name? And here's why I thought that. Because in the, in the very beginning, this has been about tax dollars and constituents having to pay bills, and you're talking about changing a name, it's gonna cost literally, there's no telling how much, just to change the name, putting buses, letterheads, things like that. But yet, your contention is that you're trying to save the constituents' tax money, so I, that, I mean, honestly, it really perplexes me, why the name change was even necessary, but I'm not trying to belittle- And I'm not trying to belittle them, but they get, I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious as to why. Is there some intrinsic value that I don't know about changing the name?
Because the majority of the citizens in Nash County would like the name changed. And we are very puzzled as to why y'all want to tell us what we could name our school system.
Well, we can't do it. We, we understand.
Well, you kinda sorta are.
Well, we've got to look at the fact that there's more students in the city of Rocky Mountain in the Nash school system than there is the rest of the county.
Sure.
Is there more students in, no? Well, it's gotta be close to fifty-fifty.
Well...
It can't be too far different.
They will not be a funding partner anymore?
Well, it don't matter. They're still, they've been a funding partner for over a hundred years, and that ain't gonna change.
Why is the school system called the Edgecombe Tarver School System then?
Because they're a small apartment. They agreed that we were, they didn't want the name. They want Tarver in the name.
I believe that.
I wasn't, I didn't have nothing to do with it.
I believe that. Really, this was...
I was just sure when you went to your afterthoughts.
I think, this was, uh, a Rocky Mountain school system. As conditions of the merger bill, uh, and I was in that conversation. Uh, it became, Nash wanted to be first, not Rocky Mountain Ash. So, there was agreement to name this Nash Rocky Mountain School System.
Mr. Wiggins, you, you use that terminology all the time, and...
What's the terminology? What terminology is that?
We had a Nash County school system. And none of our students had ever been to a, to repeat what you say, a Nash Rocky Mountain school system. They had always gone to a Nash County school system.
Exactly right.
So, so you know that, your argument works in both directions.
Well, then, I'm working it from this side.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm working it from this side.
And, and the, the, and I, I believe that this also, I think that to change, to ask us to change that school system again, which, that still is a, uh, uh, the statute was one that named Nash Rocky Mountain and then Nash Rocky Mountain Board. Back again, I think, we believe in consulting people before we do things. In terms of that name change, you asking us to agree to change the name of a school system that we had no part of naming. And I said, and right now, we hope and proposing that Rocky Mountain remains a funding partner. And you asking us to kick...
Whoa, 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 say that again?
Rocky Mountain remains in this agreement for the next five years. Fund the gap money. Maybe, I said just fund the gap money.
Right.
So, they are, to us, they are funding partner. And you asking us to, uh, let, well, take them on, kick them on the bus.
We're not kicking anybody on the bus.
Well, if we, if we agree to, to just take them out without some con, without at least some conversation with them and the Nash Rocky Mountain School Board, I believe that you asking us to, to, to do things that really we ought not to be a part of doing.
All right. You, you brought a point there about them still being in the funding for the next five years.
We, we, we made, we offered four.
Yeah, we offered four. Well, uh, I'm gonna say to our three-member committee, what do you think of just letting the name stay the same until they are completely out and then it change?
Uh, Mr. Bell, well, that is a way of resolving it. It would be a total board decision if you look for it.
Yeah. Well, uh, why don't we recommend that, sir?
I, I would agree.
Till they are funded, and when they're funded in...
When, you might as well see if they're gonna agree to that before we worry about it.
All right. Would y'all agree to that?
We'll certainly take it to our board. That sounds like something we consider.
I don't have a problem with that.
That sound like something.
I don't either, but, you know, you realize we're gonna have to hold a full board meeting before we...
I don't, and, and we will certainly...
Well, we gonna have one this afternoon at four o'clock.
Well, we gonna have hours. The senior chairman calls for it. He ain't called for it yet.
Well, we, we certainly, that would not be a sticking point.
Well, it's a sticking point, he said.
Do, do we, do we agree to take that up?
Sure. I would hate to see everything break down over a name change.
In five years, in, in, uh, we can't, we can't kick them on the, the bus and, and they, uh...
I, I ain't not kicking anybody under the bus.
I have no problem.
I'm saying, if we did it, I think we would be kicking them on the bus. Okay?
In five years, they'll have plenty of time to get their own political act together. If they won't keep their name, they probably will. That's the way I see it.
What you probably just changed.
These all come down to politics. I mean, you know we're talking about politics.
Well, well, but look, uh, we, we, listen...
If they won't keep their name, you gonna have a hard time making them do it.
Listen to me again.
We don't have anything to do with it.
But that's none of our business.
Listen, listen. I am proposing that the school system name remain Nash Rocky Mountain School System as long as Rocky Mountain is in this funding, which is supposed to end in four years.
Right. Sounds reasonable.
And you agree to take that to your board?
Your board, it really hasn't. I don't...
Yeah, they said that with...
Four years?
They'd take it to the board.
They haven't agreed, they have not agreed to the four years, Mr. Bell.
So, what?
They didn't agree. Go ahead.
That would be a part of the legislation.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm back to Mr. Felton's point that, you know, in four or five years, anything can happen. That would be a part of the legislation that we would agree on.
Right.
What?
If the board's in...
That the name would come out after, at some point, sir.
Be part of this agreement.
And Rocky Mountain dropped in the first part.
Yeah. How the legislation gonna look is another story because we don't discuss, we propose this, don't mean it's necessarily gonna be the law.
Well, it's gonna go a long ways towards becoming the law with both sides all agreeing.
I think, I think it will if, if we agree. What we can agree on anyway. Okay.
We're together. Stand.
We're not together on number one.
Number one is the issue.
Or number...
Number one is the sticking point.
Or the one with the one-five, one-five. And I don't think we're gonna get together on five.
We can let...
Well, that's a sad day. Well...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that, that we will take it back to our board and discuss it, which offers no resolution today. That's all I can say. I would like to see the board discuss it, let the board make the decision.
Number five, that is part of the decision.
Now, you're talking about number five, taking it back to your board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Number five. We can at least discuss it. I came here today seeking compromise. We can't compromise if we don't discuss.
Compromise is given both ways.
That's right. Absolutely.
Let me have your attention. Uh, I'm gonna call for, on, on this side, I'm gonna call for a ten-minute recess, and then we come back in session. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Calls back into session. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Davis to, uh, make some proposals, hopefully, if we can, we can come out of here with an agreement today. I know you need to take it back to your board, but we want an agreement in here for you to be taken back to your board. At least I do.
Our chairman has expressed all the time that, that he wouldn't be able to sign anything today or because he wants to review everything with your board, and we're gonna be doing that in the next week or so.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Davis.
Uh, first of all, it seems like the biggest issue that Edgecombe County has, uh, Mr. Chairman, the other two board members, is the dollar amount that we are talking about on the gap money. That, that seems to be the hardest obstacle for y'all to overcome. I, I still feel, according to what I read and a little bit of comments that was said here today about, at the end of this four-year period you proposed, is how y'all gonna get there to be able to make that commitment. And it involves increased sales tax, maybe some law changes on sales tax, maybe some industrial recruitment. Uh, but i- i- if we come to an agreement today, does all those ifs go away? And, and we've got a, a deal certain irregardless of, if, if we don't get a, a sales tax change, if we don't, uh, and the worst thing that happened to any of us, don't get any additional recruitment of new industries because we all want that.
Well, Mr. Davis, I would say that, you know, that is projected. But once this is in statute, we've got a responsibility to fulfill it.
Okay. That's, that's all you need to say.
It's statute, if is, if takes the ifs out of it.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Well, what, we... And I think I'm gonna be able to say this, and I still don't, don't really want to, but with, with the chairman's insistence and knowing that we need to resolve this for the community today, what our board is willing to propose is that, that we would agree to the four-year period, uh, Rocky Mountain continuing to pay, and at the end of four years, uh, that, that y'all would pick up the total amount at that point in time. Uh, in return for that, what we would insist that y'all agree to, if we agree to one, is number one, the name change would take place at the time that Rocky Mountain was removed and funded, which is at the end of that four-year period, uh, and y'all would agree to that. And that y'all would agree to allow us to leave this lawsuit language as we have it proposed here today. Because we are just convinced that it doesn't affect you monetarily anyway. It doesn't affect your relationship with your own school board that y'all are responsible for. And I, I think we're giving up a lot and not getting anything back, but that's what this committee has decided we want to put on the table. But it just needs to be a firm commitment today with understanding you got to go back to your full board, but we would certainly want that to happen between now and the end of the day Tuesday. Uh, have I stated everything that we agreed to?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? So, that, that would be our offer.
Well, I'm not speaking necessarily for the board. The lawsuit remains an issue for me. It remains an issue for me. I can't say, it's still a discussion that we have to have with our board. But I, I'll say to you, the lawsuit does remain.
I can promise you, Mr. Wiggins, the lawsuit issue with you is not near as large as a non-Ferguson issue is with us.
Well, our, our, our board, well, our board would have a, our board certainly would have a discussion on what has been proposed, and we would have an answer.
What about the name change, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, what would have a discussion? We would have a discussion on that. I certainly, I wanna have a discussion. I personally wanna have a discussion with all the involved parties as it relates to that issue. But what would have a discussion on it?
What about the Tuesday, David, when you do that?
Well...
You talking about today?
No, the next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Well, uh, we would like, I know you got to take this back to your board, but we would like for you to, uh, agree on, on these compromises, uh, today and to take to your board.
I'm saying that, I'm saying that, you know, what you offered might not necessarily get full support of our board. But a full majority carries a vote, carries the support of the board. I'm saying we're gonna, what you propose here, we carry to the board.
Is there any question about that, what we're proposing?
Uh, could I just recap, if I might? So, what you're offering is for...
And we wanna make it clear that if we don't get the other two items, that our one is off the table as well.
Understood.
I don't want to be that blunt, but yet I don't want any confusion.
If you don't be blunt, if you're not blunt, Mr. Davis, I would understand you.
I understand. Okay. So, to just make sure we are, we are, we understand, your offer is, um, for Edgecombe to pay nothing? Edgecombe, I mean, Rocky Mountain continue to pay a hundred percent of the gap for the next four years. On the fourth year, we take...
Four years is what y'all say.
On the fourth year, we, we pay...
And your five year goes away.
That's right.
Okay, I mean, we start it immediately July first.
Yes, sir. On the fourth year.
Twenty twenty-one, you will pay...
On the fourth year, we take over one hundred percent. I guess it sounds like we need some clarification on when that will start. We are in school year fifteen, sixteen.
Correct.
We are budgeting for school year sixteen, seventeen.
And that would be year one?
There'll be year one, year two, year three. Year four would be school year nineteen, twenty. So, school year nineteen, twenty, the budget year for us starts July of twenty nineteen.
Yep.
That correct?
Yes, sir.
So, for us to be prepared in twenty nineteen, July one, twenty nineteen.
Not, not...
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, right.
That's the fourth.
In addition to that, and that being contingent on us agreeing to, our board agreeing to the proposed name change as is in this agreement, as well as leaving the language about the lawsuit as is in this agreement.
The only change is that the name change would be effective at that same time as Rocky Mountain was removed and funded.
Okay.
That seemed to be important to you, Chairman.
Right. That's important to the board.
Understood.
Uh, now, what about, we have also, what about the languages that we, that we put in this? Did you discuss that?
We have, I thought we agreed to everything, the three items.
That's what I'm saying. That's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir. We have agreed to everything, but those three items we just discussed.
And I...
And if y'all need to recess, please take it.
No, we don't need to recess because I'm, I'm really asking about our board. This is a board, this is kind of something our total board needs to discuss.
Make sure we can get together before next Tuesday.
Right.
We are, I was, we'd have a, I, I, what I will say, we'd have a response to this by next, before next Tuesday.
Okay.
From our total board.
And, and y'all understand we in a light position, that we got to meet with our board at four o'clock today.
Well, you know, you, you mean four o'clock today. We, I have, I have not, don't have a board meeting scheduled.
Right.
Okay. Uh, so...
But our board has put, I'm gonna say the monkey on, the three of us that are here is back. So, we feel comfortable, we'll be okay after four o'clock meeting, but it, it still...
Well, I got some, uh...
It's a step we must go through.
I got some, some board members that need to talk about it. Okay, so they, they really need to talk about it.
Monday's a holiday.
Huh?
Monday's a holiday.
Well, uh...
We work holidays too.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see what we can do. My chairman, my manager says we'll try to have a meeting Friday.
Friday.
If we get public notes now, that'll do it, right?
If we do it this afternoon?
If we do it now, with the press here?
Forty-eight hours. We have it posted. We could post it this afternoon, maybe Friday.
We'll have a meeting Friday.
So, you...
Hold it. Let's make it. Let's make it.
We can have it in early, but this is gonna be forty-eight hours from the town.
One o'clock. Call, huh? Huh? Call. Let me put it.
You're saying you're gonna post, you're saying you're gonna post, uh...
We'll have a meeting Friday.
We'll have a meeting Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Uh, all right. We totally agree... We totally agree on two. It seems like we're, we agree on one now with what we propose.
No, no, we don't have an agreement on one. We're gonna take it to the board. Okay. We're taking that to the board. Okay.
Well, I'm talking about between you three, that you all have no opposition to that. You're gonna take it to the board.
Take it to the board. Okay. I really want to discuss this with the board.
Well, if you don't agree with it, then.
Don't, don't play that again.
Wait a minute. No, I'm saying that you're gonna take it to your board, and you ought to at least go with a positive attitude about it.
I, I, I have not, I have not expressed an attitude. I have not expressed an attitude.
No, uh.
I'm a, I'm a similar position to you, Mr. Bellville.
No.
You can't make, you can't make no decision over that.
I understand that. I understand that.
Come on, guys. Let's, let's, let's just stick to the facts, please.
We don't blow it out now. I think we're okay with it.
Word, Mr. Wiggins, now.
I'm okay with order.
That's what, that's what I want.
I can't call him out on order.
That's what.
But we're gonna adjourn. We're not in session.
That's what I want to hear. You saying you're okay with it. You saying you're okay with it. You saying, now, take it to your board and see if they're okay.
I said I'm taking it to the board. That's what I said. I said I'll take it to the board.
Okay. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave it at that. All right. Uh, it's my hope and prayer that, uh, everything would be okay. Uh, because we've been dealing with this for a long, long time. And I want to thank the boards, hear me now. I want to thank Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners for coming into this discussion so that we can come to, uh, a conclusion. Everybody not gonna get everything you want when you in, and when you trying to get, put something together and compromise here and there. But the fact that we are here, you know, said one time I thought we were gonna end up with nothing. Not, not in our last two meetings, but we had one. I thought we were gonna end up with nothing. And, and let me, let me say this. The legislature, those that I had contact with in Raleigh, want us, hear this, us, to resolve this issue, so they won't have to dissolve it because all of us may be unhappy with it. And I hope what we have done today, plus, well, this week, will end up being a part of legislation that all of us didn't get everything we want, but all of us came together and compromised on this issue that's facing us. And I believe that our constituents will understand that you can't get everything one hundred percent of what you want, but you can get a good, reasonable compromise that everybody can live with. And again, I thank you. I thank Nash County Board of Commissioners also because we were at a, at a stage one with our majority that they were gonna move forward with a split of the school system. And I want to thank them because they listened to me and we got together and had discussions. Because it could have gone the other way because the majority on a board makes the decision for the commissioners. When you have majority rule on any, vote on an issue, and they become the majority, then it also becomes the board's decision. And so I was able to get them to listen to me, what, what I proposed to offer, and they said, we'll see if it'll work. And the Lord knows, I've been praying that it will. I do not want to see a county line split. I do not. And I certainly hope that you feel the same and will work toward less keeping it that way, keeping it the same. Basically, what's changing is the funding, and after Rocky Mountain is out of it, then the name will, will become Nash County's administrative unit. Any comment from any commissioners?
I'd like to know what humor we're gonna say next to the three twenty-three. Three twenty-four.
Yeah.
Amazing grace.
No comment? No comment?
Uh, uh, we're not in session. I'm, no, no comment. I, I thank the board.
Well, if, if no, if no comment from you alls, then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to recess until four o'clock for the total board. Moved by, uh, Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Outlaw. All in favor of that? Eyes happy. Be a jury.